Wheat Ridge Channel 8, keeping you informed on events in your community.
We were City Council Meeting of April 26, 2010. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk, please take role.
Karen Adams. Karen Berry. Joseph Demott. Joyce J. Tracy Langworthy. Davis Reinhardt. Wanda Sang. And Mike Stites.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of April 12, 2010?
So moved.
Second.
A motion for approval, second by Congressman Stites, discussion on the minutes? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We have several proclamations tonight, so I'll run down to the podium. Thank you for coming tonight. Our first proclamation ceremony is going to be the public art. I was going to ask Tom Abbott to please come forward, Kevin and Diane Robb, Joyce Manwaring from Parks Department, and Steve Hubbard, Temple Inland. Approximately two years ago, the mayor's office, in conjunction with Tom Abbott, the Parks Department, Cultural Commission, the Wheat Ridge Foundation, initiated the mayor's public art initiative in Wheat Ridge. Last fall, I had the privilege to tour Temple Inland, which is a local business in the northwest part of the city. Temple Inland makes boxes for beverages, and the main client is Coors Brewing Company. Temple Inland has 120 employees and is a creator of primary jobs for employees and their families in Colorado and Wheat Ridge. Temple Inland is in the final process of completing their $15 million expansion to their plant in Wheat Ridge. And Steve Hubbard is here to talk about their plant and also public art in Wheat Ridge. Steve?
Thanks, Mayor. Temple Inland is very excited to be involved with the City of Wheat Ridge and the mayor's art initiative. I've had the opportunity to meet the man behind it tonight, and we're excited to be a part of Wheat Ridge in whole. Thank you.
So I believe Steve wanted to present a check tonight to Joyce Manwaring, our Wheat Ridge Foundation. Joyce, you want to come step forward? And Steve, you want to discuss what the check is, and we'll have some comments from other folks?
This check is from Temple Inland Foundation to the City of Wheat Ridge, and the amount of $5,000.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'd like to thank the mayor and Mr. Abbott for their public art campaign initiative. The park construction is moving along, and we're looking forward to having this beautiful piece of sculpture placed in the park. As per our public art plan, our Cultural Commission was also involved, and we appreciate their work in placing or picking a location for the sculpture. We expect it to be installed this year in late summer with the completion of the park. I'd like to introduce Kevin and Diane Robb from Kevin Robb Studios.
Hi. It truly is our honor and our pleasure to be able to provide art, public art, to the City of Wheat Ridge. We are honored that the city and the citizens support public art. It is such a, it says so much about a city, particularly a city the size of Wheat Ridge that supports public art. And I want to personally thank Temple Inland for their generous donation. It is, we find it so encouraging and so exciting that corporations step up and make donations along with the citizens here of Wheat Ridge. That really is beautiful. About three weeks ago, we were in conversation with Joyce and discovered that the park would be finished sometime late summer, early fall. And Kevin and I immediately sat down and looked at the schedule in the studio and revamped our schedule. And so the sculpture can be completed when the park is completed, because we want to make sure that the sculpture is soaring high at the park when the city has the grand opening and the grand dedication of the new park. Thank you very much.
Well, I want to say thanks to Temple Inland. This is a, it's a great act of civic philanthropy. Small city like Wheat Ridge, just wonderful. We can't thank you enough, and your employees that I know all have a lot to do with this. So, and I wanted to mention to folks that we all recognize sometimes these contemporary sculptures, you think that the artist is laughing all the way to the bank. And sometimes the donors, you wonder what they're thinking. But here with Kevin Robb, we have just an incredible thing right here in our city. He does beautiful work, inspiring work with stainless steel. It's going to be exciting and fulfilling and fun when we see this Kevin Robb sculpture at the entrance to our new park. So I just think it's something to really look forward to. And thanks again to Temple Inland.
Thank you once again to all the folks involved in the public art initiative. And Joyce is going to stay up here, and I ask Mrs. Wheat Ridge to please come forward. We're going to do Arbor Day at Tree City USA. So Joyce, would you like to introduce some folks for us tonight? And Mrs. Wheat Ridge will read the proclamation.
I'd like to have Keith Wood, committee forester from the Colorado State Forest Service, come up, and Rick Murray, the City of Wheat Ridge Parks Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, citizens of Wheat Ridge. Good evening. Whereas trees have always been regarded as an important asset to the citizens of the community of Wheat Ridge, providing one of the first business opportunities in the 1860s. And whereas trees continue to be respected as an important part of the quality of life to the citizens of the City of Wheat Ridge and visitors, enhancing property values and community spirit. And whereas our mature trees are suffering from the devastation of environmental stresses, including insect and disease, winter drought, and severe temperatures. And whereas citizens, businesses, green industry, elected officials, and staff continue to work together to maintain and provide for tree-covered streets, parks, and properties as part of a comprehensive community forestry program. And whereas the City of Wheat Ridge has been awarded Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, now therefore, I, Jerry DiTullio, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, do hereby declare Thursday, April 29, 2010, a City of Wheat Ridge Arbor Day celebration, and encourage all citizens and businesses of Wheat Ridge to participate in this effort by planting a tree or shrub.
Thanks for the time on the agenda tonight to present Wheat Ridge with its 31st Tree City USA award. There are only two other communities in Colorado that have more years on you here, so you can be very proud of those 31 years as Tree City USA. It's not an automatic renewal. We have to receive the application each year at the Colorado State Forest Service, and we look for four standards that are met each year for Wheat Ridge to maintain its Tree City USA status. One thing we look for is either a tree board, or professional tree staff, or a department within the community in charge of the tree care program. And we see each year for the last several years that it's Wheat Ridge's Parks Recreation Department with Joyce Manwaring, Rick Murray, Margaret Paget, and Dave Kinzer doing the brunt of that tree work out there. So that's the first thing we look for that's in place. The second thing is that the tree ordinance is still in place and enforceable. Third thing is the expenditures, and that's $2 per capita. So with a population of about 32,000, we're looking for about $64,000 of expenses on the tree care program. And then the fourth thing, an Arbor Day observance held in the community, and then the proclamation, like was read here this evening. And I know 2009 was not only a tough year on the trees here. I know you guys had a pretty bad storm that came through last summer, but also it was a tough budget year all over. And it's nice to see our Tree City USA communities maintaining the tree programs in their communities. I think sometimes the tree programs in our communities can be looked at as nice during tough budget years, but not a necessity. But I think our tree cities do a really good job of seeing the necessity of property planted and cared for trees, and all the economic and environmental benefits they can provide. So keep up the good work. I have a packet of materials here, which includes a new flag and a leaf sticker for the plaque that I can present to you, Mayor, and say, congratulations on 31 years of Tree City USA.
If I could just say a couple of words. I really like to thank Keith for all his efforts. I think I've known Keith for about eight years. He's very integral as far as all the certification processes. He also does a lot of work with updates, insect and disease updates, community forestry, like he had said, and just in general, keeping us aware of what's going on out there, so that we can have the program that we do right now. I do want to thank everybody else. There's so many people that, from the storm, that's still ongoing, but we really had a whole lot of help from a lot of people, and I just want to do a blanket recognition for them. We do have two more events this year. The 27th, we have an event at the Recreation Center at 10:00 a.m. It's another tree planting. Then we have one more. That's going to take place in Anderson Park, in the back of the park. So if everybody can make it, we cordially invite you. So thank you very much again.
Thank you to all our folks who work in our urban forest. The next proclamation is our May Mental Health Month. I'd ask Julie DiTullio and Mark Johnson to please step forward.
Whereas mental illness is the leading cause of disability in the United States, resulting in 217 million days of works lost annually due to productivity decline, more than many other chronic conditions. And whereas by 2020, behavioral health disorders will surpass all physical diseases worldwide. And whereas good mental health is essential to the overall health and emotional well-being of Colorado's children, youth, adults, and families. And whereas access to medication and treatment helps prevent people from ending up in emergency rooms, correction facilities, becoming homeless, and most importantly, prevent suicides. And whereas it costs 6.5 times more to incarcerate people experiencing mental health issues than to treat them in the community. And whereas the vast majority of children, youth, and adults in Colorado who have mental health disorders are not receiving the help they need, and that addressing their complex mental health needs is fundamental to the future of Colorado. Now therefore, the mayor and city council for the City of Wheat Ridge do hereby proclaim May 2010 as Mental Health Month, and call upon all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our communities and resources to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, providing appropriate and accessible services for all citizens, making mental health a priority.
Thank you, City Council. Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the board, staff, and clients of Jefferson Center for Mental Health, thank you for issuing this proclamation and recognizing the importance of mental wellness for our community and helping to raise awareness. Nearly one in five Americans need mental health services each year. When it is detected early and treated, people can recover and maintain a healthy and independent life. We truly value the support of the City of Wheat Ridge. The economic downturn has produced an increased number of stressors and problems for families and individuals, resulting in an increased demand for help coping with the emotional strain. Jefferson Center for Mental Health, which has been here for 50 years in Jefferson County, continues to see record demand for services, and since the downturn began, has seen a 30% increase in people seeking help. To respond to this community need, we created a program called Jefferson Center Partners to offer low-cost counseling, $5 per visit, to anyone in our service area. Jefferson Center for Mental Health is proud to serve as this community's nonprofit mental health center for more than 50 years. Last year, we served more than 12,000 people in need. Thank you for your support in helping us make a difference. And Julie is going to pass out some calendars to the city council members and some pens for wearing in May. May is Mental Health Month. We celebrate that nationally. Just to remind people that there's still stigma out there, and we wish to eradicate that stigma, and people with mental illness need help and support. Thank you.
Our next proclamation tonight is Building Safety Month, May 2010. I'm going to ask Ken Johnson to please come forward. Ken's our community development director and in charge of building codes.
Whereas through our continuing efforts to address critical safety issues in the built environment that affects our citizens, regardless of age or occupation, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, we are confident that our structures are safe and sound. And whereas these dedicated members of the International Code Council develop and implement the highest quality codes to protect Americans in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council and International Code Council Foundation, to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings. And whereas the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department strives to ensure a safe and livable built environment for all citizens and businesses, and to do what is possible to ensure that our senior citizens and disabled persons in the community live in a safe and accessible home. And whereas the mayor convened a task force of interested citizens to review the 2006 international codes in January of 2010, and the city council is considering an ordinance adopting the 2006 I codes with local amendments, with a public hearing set for May 10, 2010. And now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that May 1 through May 31, 2010, is Building Safety Month in the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado. Accordingly, our citizens are encouraged to join communities across America to participate in Building Safety Month activities.
Well, as noted in the proclamation, a first thank you to mayor and council for recognizing Building Safety Month. We think it's a real important month to honor for the city. And thank you to the mayor and council for your ongoing support in assisting my department in consideration of adoption of the 2006 I codes. As luck would have it, we have the public hearing scheduled for May 10 on consideration of adoption of the 2006 international codes. So we look forward to that public hearing, and thank you for your support along the way, as well as your support in helping us to constantly evaluate our building division practices and policies, and make sure that we're, you know, keeping those aligned with the goals of the community and our mission to be open for business. So thank you for that.
Last but not least, our next proclamation is Colorado Business Week, and we're at April 26 through May 2, 2010. I'd like to ask our economic development director, Ryan Satelsky, to please come forward. And I think we should probably have Randy Young come forward, too, as our city manager, to accept this proclamation.
And I'd also like to invite Tom Rippe to help us accept this proclamation. He's representing several of our economic development partners here tonight, including Enterprise Wheat Ridge, The West Chamber. I think he's on the board of Wheat Ridge 2020, just to name a few. So, thanks.
Whereas the City of Wheat Ridge works as a partner with the Wheat Ridge business community, including the Applewood Business Association, Enterprise Wheat Ridge, Jefferson Economic Council, Jefferson County Business Resource Center, West Chamber, serving Jefferson County, Wheat Ridge Business District, Wheat Ridge 2020, and other regional partners. And whereas the City of Wheat Ridge recognizes the contribution that business makes to increasing the quality of life in our community. And whereas the City of Wheat Ridge helps to promote the business community to the public at large. And whereas the City of Wheat Ridge invites businesses and community members to nominate Wheat Ridge businesses from April 26, 2010 until June 11, 2010, for the 2010 Business Awards. And whereas the City of Wheat Ridge will recognize these award winners, the Seventh Annual Business Appreciation Luncheon to be held on August 6, 2010, at the Wheat Ridge Recreation Center. Now therefore, I, Jerry DiTullio, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, do recognize the week of April 26 through May 2, 2010, as Celebrate Business Week in Wheat Ridge, and further extend appreciation to our business community for the services they perform and their dedication to the community.
Mayor and council, I'm a last-minute and poor substitute for the person who should be here. I'd like to just mention that Loretta Schwankel has done a phenomenal job of helping to grow a domestic commercial enterprise here, and that's Enterprise Wheat Ridge. It has a lot of great volunteers, by the way, but she really should be here, because she's the one who's really helped move that organization. But on behalf of all of the organizations recognized, thank you so much.
And I would just like to add that Celebrate Business Week in Wheat Ridge is also kind of the kickoff week to the nomination period for the business awards. So I just want to encourage all of our businesses out there to go to the city's website. On the economic development page, you can find an electronic nomination form for the different business award categories this year. There are five of them. And nominate your own business, or a business that you've been going to a while. But get out there and nominate the great businesses that are here in Wheat Ridge, so that we can recognize them. So that's just what I wanted to add. Thanks.
Thank you to all of our participants tonight. The next item on our agenda is citizens' right to speak. Citizens' right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. When you are speaking at the podium, you will see a green light when you start speaking, a yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and a red light when your time is up. So please step forward to the podium if you'd like to speak tonight under public comment. Please spell your last name for the record, and give your city and or your address. The podium right here, please. Please spell your last name for the record.
E.L.A.K.E.S.L.E.Y. I just have a written statement I'd like to read into the record and pass out to...
Please hand it to the city clerk.
Members of the city council, Mr. Mayor and citizens, it has come to my attention that Wheat Ridge 2020 has or will seek additional funding in the near future. I am here as a contractor who has developed several properties for Wheat Ridge for 2020. Upon completion of 11 of these projects in the latter half of November 2008, Wheat Ridge 2020 chose not to pay us for the work completed, without explanation, and instead engaged in a long and fruitless process of hiring consultants to evaluate the progress of completed projects. After several weeks, we were forced to engage in legal representation to protect our interest and the interest of our suppliers and subcontractors for past due amounts in the excess of $200,000. Ultimately, we chose to hold our subcontractors and suppliers harmless, and fronted the entire burden of the debt owed by Wheat Ridge 2020, and through legal action, received a partial payment. We have continued our legal battle with Wheat Ridge 2020, and are now standing at the threshold of Jefferson County Court, having spent tens of thousands of dollars in legal expenses. I'm not here to argue my case, or to prove or disprove anything related. I am just angry, as any taxpayer in Wheat Ridge should be, that Wheat Ridge 2020, for the past 16 months, continues to pursue costly litigation and pay expensive salaries instead of settling its debts. At this point, I would just like to ask the city council to consider the organization Wheat Ridge 2020 as a whole, and point out the question, if Wheat Ridge 2020 has a financial responsibility to the citizens, taxpayers, and vendors it contracts and serves, should taxpayer dollars be used to litigate claims borne by 2020's management decisions? I urge you to strongly consider how the taxpayer money is spent through Wheat Ridge 2020, before you allocate another dime. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else here under public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes tonight to the agenda? The agenda will stand by unanimous consent. Next item, item one is Consent Agenda. Councilmember Demott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Consent Agenda. 1A, motion to appoint Scott Ohm to the Building Code Advisory Board, representing District 2, term to expire March 2, 2011. 1B, motion to approve payment to Code Consultants International in the amount of $17,580 for March 2010 contract building inspections. 1C, motion to appoint the mayor as the primary representative and the community development director as the alternative representative on the Jefferson County Community Development Advisory Board. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve 1A, 1B, and 1C.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve items 1, A, B, and C, second by Councilmember Sang. Discussion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinances on second reading. The order of testimony will be city staff, the applicant, and then the public, followed by council discussion and questions. Please keep all comments germane to the subject. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Sang, we have Resolution 19-2010, a Resolution 20-2010. Councilmember Sang?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 19-2010, a resolution considering a special use permit to allow a body art establishment, and Resolution number 20-2010, and a resolution considering a variance to allow the amount of total floor area devoted to the residential use of the structure to exceed the amount of floor area devoted to the commercial use on property zone restricted commercial, RC. The applicants, Beau Fuchs and Hillary Harris, are requesting approval of a special use permit to allow a body art establishment located at 4330 Harland Street. Supplementally to the special use is a request for a variance that would allow residential use to exceed the amount of square footage dedicated to the commercial use. The RC Zone District, along with all other commercial zone districts, allow for body art establishments only after a special use has been approved. Residential uses are also permitted in all commercial zone districts. Residential uses are also permitted in all commercial zone districts. However, the area dedicated to the residential component of the structure is not to exceed the area used for the commercial component.
If you're here tonight to speak on this agenda item, whether you're staff or public, please stand and raise your right hand. I'll swear you in now, so we don't have to do it every time you're at the podium. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in this subject? Please say I do. Thank you. Move on to staff presentation.
Good evening, Council. I will give it a minute up here to warm up the overhead projector so the members of the public can see as well, before we get started.
Please state your name and spell your last name.
I, Adam Teetz, T-I-E-T-Z. I'm a planner in the Community Development Department.
Go ahead and start.
Okay. All right. Tonight, we are here to hear Case Number SUP 01004 and additionally WA 1003. The Case Number SUP 1004 is a special use permit request for a body art establishment located at 4330 Harland Street. And along with that is the case for a variance to allow for a residential use in a commercial zone district that exceeds the commercial square footage, the commercial square footage of the use of this structure. There will be separate motions for the two cases, but they will be heard since they are similar in nature. The RC Zone District is a more restrictive, one of the more restrictive commercial zone districts in the City of Wheat Ridge. It's more tailored to neighborhood, neighborhood uses and neighborhood services, such as dentist's office, small doctors' offices, limited amounts of retail, and things of that nature. In this, you can see that some of the allowed uses are at things such as antique stores, art galleries, sit-down restaurants, and then also residential structures or residential uses are allowed in the RC Zone District, but must comply with Chapter 26-626, which regulates the residential component of the, the residential component of the structure in a commercial zone district. Special uses in the RC Zone District are discretionary and can be, based on their development or how they're designed and operated and maintained, may be approved in that zone district. The primary issues usually concerned with special use permits are operational consideration, other factors that might be incorporated to mitigate some of the impacts of, around the, on the surrounding properties. City Council does have the ability to impose conditions upon approval of a special use permit. In addition to that, they can also decide whether the special use permit is granted in perpetuity with the land, whether the special use permit runs with the applicant, or if the special use permit has a set amount of time or can expire after a certain amount of time. Here, you can see the property is outlined in red at 4330 Harland. It is, again, in the RC Zone District. The property is approximately 10, or just short of 11,000 square feet, or .25 acres, and it's located on the east side of Harland between 44th and West 33rd Avenues. We can see here that the area is fairly commercially oriented as West 44th Avenue is a primary commercial corridor through the city, and as Harland also has on and off ramps to I-70 to the north. The area directly to the south starts to transition more into, more into a residential, moderate-density residential neighborhood as it gets closer to West 41st Avenue. And then, once again, as you approach West 38th Avenue on Harland, it becomes, begins to transition again to more of a commercial area. The proposed body art establishment will be similar in nature to that of the surrounding uses, in that it will not generate a lot of traffic. There is, again, in this, in this particular corridor, there's dentist's office, veterinary clinics, and other administrative offices for businesses of the nature.
Adam, excuse me, is the screen working now?
It's not. I don't know.
Did you want to take a look at it before we continue? Or is, it's not working at all, or?
It says it's warming up, but...
I just don't want the public not to be able to see this while we're going through the public hearing. Well, I don't think it's taking off now, but...
Yeah.
What we'll do is we'll take just a quick five-minute recess to see if we can get this up and running.
Back up to this slide here. Again, we can see the property outlined here in red with the RC zoning designation being that orangish color. You can see the areas to the north are zoned C1, designated by the pinkish color. The area is in a fairly commercial corridor throughout the, being along the 44th Avenue corridor, and then again, along Harland, which has the interstate on and off ramps to the north. The areas immediately to the east are zoned R3, which is for moderate-density residential. And it is a sort of a transitional type of commercial use in this area. It's more dental offices, veterinary clinics, other smaller and lower intense in, commercial uses, as it transitions into the neighborhood area to the south. The body art establishment is, is proposed to be similar in nature to these businesses in that it won't generate a large amount of traffic, as it will also function as the applicant's home. Again, here is the property outlined in red, just a close-up of the property. It is, the site is fully developed and contains a 2,158-square-foot structure with an outbuilding on the rear. It was constructed in 1955, and in 1976, the northern portion of the structure was converted into a photography studio, and has been used in that manner since. The property is now for sale, and the applicants propose no changes to the structure. The northern 700 square feet of the property will remain in the commercial use as a body art establishment, and then the other, approximately 1,500 square feet, will remain for their primary, primary residence, as indicated here on their floor plan. The studio and, the studio and the residence do have their own separate entrances, and they will be fully separated, separated from each other. In other words, you will have to leave the residence to enter the studio and vice versa, if that were the case. Both, both entrances have access to paved parking area on the west side of the structure, and the parking area is directly adjacent and has access to Harland Street, which the, the current parking configuration provides parking for six spaces. And there will be some improvements to the site. The parking lot will be restriped to have 90-degree parking, so that cars are not pulling out, backing out onto Harland Street and across sidewalks. With 90-degree parking, they're more apt to back out into the parking, turn around, and then go head out onto Harland Street. The applicant has been doing body art establishment, or, excuse me, has been doing body art for several years, and most of his clientele has been established. Work is rarely done on walk-in customers, even though there will be set hours for the body art establishment to stay open typically from 11:00 PM till 8:00 PM. 11:00, excuse me, 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, sorry. The applicants will be renovating the interior of the home, as well as the exterior of the home, to meet their needs for their residence and as, and for their business. As you can see, the building here is a little dated. This is the entrance to the, where the studio will be. So they will be investing several thousand dollars in upgrading both the interior and the exterior of the building. This is the entrance to the residence on the southern side of the property. The Jefferson County Health Department is also the regulating authority for body art establishments, and requires plan review, and it also requires inspections of equipment in the building prior to opening the facility. After that, subsequent yearly inspections are required for the health department to ensure that all health codes are being met. This is the interior of where the proposed body art studio will be. Currently, right now, it is, has been used, as previously stated, as a photography studio. Here is a photo of the property looking to it, to the north from the south property. Here is a graphic. The green, we, during the, prior to the neighborhood meeting, we did have some expressed concern regarding the special use permit request. The properties in green were, the property immediately to the south, we have one written letter of objection to the request, and I will pass that down here for council to review. And then, the properties in yellow, or, then the, the additional green property called in, and they did have some concerns. They did not provide anything to us in writing, but they did have, they did call in and have some concerns, and those were basically due to traffic. The properties in yellow depict property owners that were present at the neighborhood meeting. At the neighborhood meeting, some of the concerns, again, were traffic, property values, the type of clientele that body art establishments attract, and other safety, neighborhood safety So, based on this, staff has reviewed and reviewed the criteria for the special use permit, and staff has, does recommend approval for the following reasons. The request meets all the applicable, applicable conditions as required by Section 26-114 of the City of Wheat Ridge Code of Laws. There will be no detrimental effect on health, safety, welfare, or convenience to the public in the area. The special use will not create adverse impacts greater than allowed under the existing zoning for the property. There will be no impact on the light, air, or water to the adjacent property owners. The special use will not create or contribute to blight in the neighborhood, and will not overburden the capacities of the existing streets, parks, schools, and other public facilities. With the following conditions. The special use for this establishment shall be issued to the applicant and may not be inherited. The parking lot must be restriped to reflect 90-degree parking. The special use permit must be consistent with the definition of body art establishment as specified in the city code, Section 26-123. The business shall operate in compliance with all state and county regulations regarding the safe and sanitary practice of body art, the safe and sanitary physical environment where body art is performed, and the safe and sanitary conditions of the where body art is performed, and the safe and sanitary conditions of the equipment utilized in body art procedures. Approval of, from the Jefferson County Health Department must be obtained and submitted in order for the City of Wheat Ridge to issue building permits and a certificate of occupancy. Multiple documented complaints for the business shall be grounds for initiating enforcement procedures of city code section-26-114F. Operation hours of the business shall cease by 8:00 PM Sunday through Thursday and 10:00 PM Friday and Saturday. The number of artists allowed to perform work in the studio shall be limited to two as regulated by the Jefferson County Health Department. And then for the variance, staff also has criteria to review when looking at a variance and staff does recommend approval of the variance for the following reasons. There will be no detrimental effect on health, safety, welfare, or convenience to the public in the area. There will be no impact on light, air, or water to the adjacent property owners. The variance will not create or contribute to blight in the neighborhood, will not overburden the capacities of the existing streets, parks, schools, and other public facilities. The character of the area will not be altered by this request. The applicant's proposing substantial investment in the property which would not otherwise happen if that variance were denied. The variance will result in the accommodation of persons with disabilities to be made with the following conditions. The floor area dedicated to the residence may not be increased either through the conversion of the studio to livable space or through the construction of additions to the structure that would be for residential use. And two, the structure may not be used wholly as a residential structure at any point. Any questions of council?
Well, we'll move on to public comment first and then we'll come back to council questions. So please step forward if you're here to speak on this item, sign under public comment. Please come up to the podium, spell your last name for the record and state your city and/or your address, so please step forward. And you can form a line along the wall if you're interested in speaking and keeping things moving along.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council and members of the community.
Please state your name and spell your last name.
My name is Mark Hanson, H-A-N-S-E-N, and I work for Harold Hill at McKinley and Hill Antiques located at 4340 Harlan Street. The building I'm referring to, the address I just gave you, is about 15 feet from the proposed tattoo parlor. And I'm here to represent Harold Hill. He's not happy that a tattoo parlor is being considered for the business directly next door to him. He has been a taxpayer and resident of Wheat Ridge for 50 years, has been in business as the same owner at the same location for 50 years. So I may be one of just a few voices expressing his concerns related to this proposal, but in respect for him and at his request, I am appearing before you hoping that some reservations are taken in making this approval. Some suggestions I would have, for instance, would be, you know, if it is approved, that there be a small sign, that the sign not say "Tattoo." You know, body art, I think people know what body art is, but that would be a possible compromise. As long as a sign doesn't say "Tattoo," I know that Mr. Hill would feel that some accommodation was made for him. The other thing is, are tattoo parlors usually open until 10:00 PM and, you know, 8:00 PM at night? That seems very late at night to be operating for any normal business, but then, you know, I guess tattoo parlors aren't really a normal business compared to most businesses. I just wanted to make that point, that those hours seem pretty late. Let's see, what else? As far as blight goes, I mean, I know that's, you know, people are becoming more accepting of a lot of different things, you know, tattoos included, but there's still a stigma related to tattoos and tattoo parlors. There's a tattoo parlor on Broadway called Low Life Tattoo. It's funny, I saw it and I thought it was a joke, but that's what people think of when they think of tattoos. They think, you know, it's, you know, so it may not directly cause blight, but on one side we have a pawn shop and on the other side there'll be a tattoo parlor, you know? I mean, this is a story that specializes in 18th century English furniture and we have customers from all over Colorado and all over the country and, you know, it's just not a great, it's not the best business for us to have 15 feet, you know, from our building. So anyway, I just wanted to, you know, express our feelings concerning this and, you know, we wish the Feltners all the best as far as the place in the property with the right business and we have nothing against the people making the application for this tattoo parlor, but, you know, it's, it just doesn't go with our business model having a tattoo parlor next door to us. So that's all I'd like to say.
Feel free to bring the mic down a little bit. State, spell your last name for the record, please.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, I thank you for allowing me to speak here. I'm not a public speaker, so bear with me.
Just go ahead and give us your name and spell your last name for the record.
Jorgensen, J-O-R-G-E-N-S-E-N. And we owned the property to the northeast of this property that we're talking about and it's right on the corner, kitty corner crossed. And it's a residential home that is a rental right now and we have people that are renting it from us that have a daycare center there. And we're concerned as to what benefit this would have for the area, for the children, for our whole community. Because we're always looking to improve our community, to make everything better. And I can't see where this is going to improve our area. And also, this property, I guess, is being sold and would the next people that buy this, if this was approved, would the next people that buy it be able to do the same thing or do anything that would be anywhere near the same type of business? And the hours of business, 10 o'clock at night on Friday and Saturday nights, that seems, you know, it's not late for a business, but it is in a residential area of people that are coming and going there. And, you know, Mark mentioned the signs, you know, how bright and how much signs and stuff there'd be. And we're real concerned about the clientele that may be coming in there to do this business. And that's about all I have and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Johnstone, or Adam, would you address the comment, what can go into this building if this current applicant leaves? Just real quickly. Hold your mic.
Quickly, we're recommending a condition that would limit the approval of the SGP to this applicant and this applicant only.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else under public comment? Please step forward and spell your last name and give us your city and/or your street.
Hi, my name is, spell G-A-L-L-O-W-A-Y. My first name is Sharon and I'm off of 43rd and Gray. And I think my only concern is the signage, which I have expressed in the last meeting that we attended, that a big neon sign flashing tattoos would really, really bother me. And I think that's, that if they did body art signage, I probably would be okay with that, but the signage is what my concern is. Thank you.
Thank you.
The applicant?
Do we have anybody else to speak under public comment?
Mr. Mayor, the applicant?
I'm going to get him. I know we're, I'm just going. So move on to the applicant. Please step forward and spell your last name and, for the record. Had a little typo on my script here, so.
Yeah. Hi, everybody, I'm Beau.
Please spell your last name for the record and give us your address.
F-U-K-S, no C. It's pronounced "Fux" like books.
And Hillary?
Hi, I'm Hillary. My last name is H-A-R-R-I-S.
Currently, we live in Lakewood by Green Mountain. We are hoping to purchase this property. I know there's a huge taboo with tattoo. It just kind of has followed it. It's been happening since the 15th century. First off, I'd like to say it is not a parlor. Parlor's outdated. This is just a private studio. I've worked at lots of large tattoo shops, tattoo studios, tattoo parlors, I've worked all over the place. 2007 to 2009, I worked at Wild Idea Tattoo in Rapid City.
Beau, do you mind facing the council and talk to the council? They're the ones making the final decision, so thank you.
2007 to 2009, I worked at Wild Idea in Rapid City, South Dakota, which was rated the number one nicest tattoo studio in the nation. But still, it was just too big, there's too many people, too high flow. I like to work on an appointment basis because everything I do is custom. It's usually drawn on the skin or just pre-drawn beforehand. It's not like a walk-in, get your Tasmanian devil tattoo kind of establishment. I had talked to a few of the neighbors that were concerned about the signs. I have no problem putting just body art on the establishment, even though our type of business is tattooing. I don't want to step on anybody's toes or hurt anybody's feelings. We just need a home. We moved out here to Colorado. Hillary goes to the Aveda Institute and she'll be doing cosmetology when she's done in August. Someday, she's going to probably open her own hair studio, that kind of stuff. But right now, the economy is horrible and we're paying, I have a small studio right now on 16th and Carr Street. It's called Element Eight Tattoo and we'll be keeping the same name, but I won't put "Tattoo" on the sign. It'll say "Element Eight Body Art" and that would be it. There's a two-foot by eight-foot sign, I believe, that is out front. It used to be lit, but I don't think it is lit right now, but I would like to light it someday. Obviously, we'll have to go through sign permits and all that stuff when that time comes. What else? Hours. Honestly, I haven't worked past 8 o'clock for a couple of years, so if you guys are upset about the 10 o'clock, we can stop the 10 o'clock and just go to 8. Right now, my business hours. You can speak too.
I just would like to say that a lot of businesses, like restaurants and stuff, do operate late and it's not a lot of flow and we do work by appointment only and some people work until 5 o'clock and they have to come in and say they have four hours scheduled. That's how we survive. So, I mean, I mean, we're willing to do whatever it takes, but I would just like to state that the hours are not that late, I guess, because we were working somewhere that was open till 11 or midnight previously. He was. I would just like to say that.
But since, since we've owned our own studio, our hours have been 11 till 8:00 PM and that's just been how we've been doing it. Typically, I only work on one client a day for four to five hours, so hopefully, I mean, I don't have another artist right now. I have a guest artist that I used to work with at Wild Idea in Rapid City, South Dakota, and he comes out for four to five days a month right now. At some point, he is going to move here and he will be my full-time artist, but he does not live here yet, so right now, it's just going to be me working and then hopefully someday him because we're going to need his income. But right now, we're dishing out $2,500 to $3,000 a month in bills to pay for a studio and our home and I'm not doing a high volume of work, so it doesn't really balance out that well. Having the establishment in the same location makes it so I can go home faster. Yeah, we have a four-year-old and a six-year-old daughter that could attend your daycare service back there.
We need daycare.
We have, so we have two little girls that live with us and, you know, we just, we just want a home. We just want to be part of a community and not be frowned upon as taboo and scary because we're not.
Thank you.
Oh, I have one more thing to say. There are only three tattoo shops in the state of Colorado that run pneumatic tattoo machines, which are air-powered tattoo machines. As far as sterility goes, an air-powered tattoo machine is the only tattoo machine you can run through an autoclave. Anything that is an electric machine can only be sanitized with a spray-on solution and wiped clean. So the only true 100% sterile tattoo is done pneumatically and I run all pneumatic equipment. It's all medical and dental-grade equipment. And I also participate in a monthly spore testing. I have a Jefferson County health code license already, but it does not transfer until, I mean, I have to get it redone when we move because it's establishment-specific. I don't really know what else to say. I'd answer any questions any of you guys have. If you've got anything.
Okay, well, we'll continue on and then we'll come back if we have council questions.
Okay.
Do we have anybody else from the public before we move on to council questions and discussion? Okay, we'll move on to council discussion. Ms. Berry?
Mr. Johnstone, usually like specific uses are put on as special uses because of some special impact of concern. Can you tell me why this particular use, if you can recall or know, why this particular use is a special use? What, you know, impact precipitated that?
I wasn't here at the time that the ordinance was adopted by council in terms of specific uses that were identified in the process of designating body art as a special use. I don't know if someone else in the, Jerry, if you were more familiar with the findings in that case?
As I recall, the body art establishments and psychic advisors were both designated as special uses, I think, in the same ordinance, if not as companion ordinances. And my recollection of the discussion is legislative determination for council to decide, as you know, whether something will be a special use and require that individualized hearing as we're having tonight. And to the best of my recollection, the, some of the sentiment expressed on council at that time was that those two particular uses should deserve to have, the neighbors, potential neighbors of such uses should be given an opportunity to be heard in a way that is not true for a use by right in his own district. And I think it was the focus on the neighbors and let's hear from them and this gives us a vehicle to do that with these uses that I think drove, inspired the council to adopt that ordinance.
When we look at a special use, I mean, our primary criteria truly is to look at the impacts of that use and compare them to those that are under, allowed under existing zoning. Is that correct?
Largely. I mean, you have your, the general standards in the special use code section that really do focus on, focus on impact.
And really, it's been staff's determination that this particular use really is not more impact. I could see another commercial use there being much more impactful in terms of traffic and, and other impacts than, than this particular use. That was the staff recommendation, is that correct, Mr. Johnstone?
That's correct.
Yeah. You know, Mr. Hill's facility is a really wonderful place. I wish I could afford some of the antiques in that, in that building and he takes immaculate care of that building. It really is a wonderful addition to the community and he is, I mean, correct, I know interior designers from all over the state who, who go there and use that facility to look at antiques. I feel that, that this particular use really isn't any more impacted than what is really allowed under existing uses and I do feel that it meets the criteria by which we evaluate special uses.
Do we have any other comments or questions before I close the public hearing?
I just want to ask staff under the sign code, what exactly would be permitted as a sign?
I might defer to Adam on the specifics.
The signage that's allowed on the property is dependent on the square footage of the c-.
commercial use of the property. There is an existing sign in place on this, actually, on this screen here, it's right here in this gravel-type area. So they would be able to allow, or they would be allowed to use that existing sign. I don't know what the square footage of it is, but since it is, since it's existing, they are able to use that. If they were to take it down and to construct a new sign, it would have to meet the size standards, and again, that's based on the square footage of the, of the property.
Mr. Mayor? I should add, because we're in special use territory, that does give the council the ability to add special use conditions that would address the sign and be more restrictive than the sign code would otherwise allow.
Right. Thanks.
So you can't answer whether the current sign, I mean, my impression is that the current sign might exceed the normal, what could be permitted today, is that true?
From the looks of it, I haven't gone out and measured it, but from the looks of it, it looks like it would be too large, based on what's allowed in the code today, and based on that the commercial usage is only going to be 700 square feet. Oh, so it sounds like it's 16 square feet, and I'd have to look in my code really quick and get out my calculator to see what's actually allowed based on that, but if you want me to get that number, I can figure that up for you quick.
I actually would be interested enough to know.
Okay.
While we're waiting for that information, Mr. Stites, and then I'll call in, Ms. Jay.
Just out of curiosity, does anybody know how long that building has sat vacant?
If you're gonna step forward, please say, give your name and spell your last name for the record. So...
I'm John Feltner, F E L T N E R. I'm the seller of the property. I've owned it since 1975. It's been vacant for over two years, and it has rapidly gone downhill, because the people that were in there went bankrupt and had illegally subleased it to some people from Anaheim, California, who let it go to pot. I mean, it was just terrible. They shut off the water, and it was just terrible.
Thank you. Adam?
For a single-use development, such as this property, they are allowed, if the square footage of the structure is between zero and 1,500 square feet, they're allowed 35 square feet of signage. So it sounds like they're actually under what they'd be allowed.
Thank you. Congressman Jay?
I have a couple of questions of the applicants.
Would the applicants please step forward? To the podium, please.
Mr. Fuchs, and Hillary, I think it was, is there any plans for adding a beauty shop or beauty business after you get your education in that area?
The health department, I don't think would allow it for the square footage.
No, and I wanna work under somebody for at least four to five years. Opening up my own shop would be a completely separate entity on its own. I mean, I might add "tattoo" with it, but that, that area would always just be a private tattoo studio and never be added on to.
In the area of body piercing, is any of that gonna be a part of your business?
I do do facial piercings, but I don't do anything else, that's it. So ears and noses. Also, I'd like to state, I do not tattoo anyone under the age of 18, with or without parent consent, it doesn't matter to me. The state of Colorado allows you to tattoo and pierce 16-year-olds with parental consent, but I got two little girls, and I just don't see it as feasible. So that's just another thing I don't do.
I did talk to a few of your neighbors around, around the building area, and the main concern seemed to be the signage, as well as, of course, the traffic, et cetera, and I don't think traffic's gonna be a big problem, but I hear you're willing to accept a, perhaps a smaller sign, and definitely do not say "tattoo." There was even hope that you would just have your company name and not even saying that it is body art.
I, you know, I wanna kinda, you know, because these people are gonna be our neighbors for probably till we die, if we get into this place, so I'd like to make friends with all of you guys, but, you know, it is our business, and I do need, you know, new people to come in, so they need to know what I'm doing.
Of course, I understand.
I'm okay with not labeling it "tattoo," because I'd be the first to admit "tattoo" has a stigma that sticks to it, and it can make or break your business, and I'm totally okay with going with body art, that is fine with me, but if I were to move in the property, I would need to have at least body art on the, on the sign.
I understand.
Ms. Jay, you just declared that you had ex parte contacts with the neighbors, and this is a quasi-judicial matter, so at this time, you would need to declare who you spoke with and let council know and staff know at this time.
Oh, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry that I didn't, and I spoke to your, the antique person next door, a dentist, and a rather favorable person across the street. Thank you for reminding me of that, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dahl, do you have any comments on this, as quasi-judicial?
The only follow-up question I would have would be for Councilmember Jay, that in spite of those contacts, are you able to render a fair and impartial decision on this matter?
Definitely, yes.
Thank you, that's sufficient, thanks.
Okay, do we have any other questions or comments from council before I close the public hearing? I'm gonna close the public hearing, and a motion's in order. And then we have a, oh, never mind. The second motion, I believe, takes six votes, it's the variance, the resolution 20-2010, so we're doing right now Resolution 19-2010, Councilmember Sang.
To adopt Council Resolution Number 19-2010, Case Number SUP 10-4, a request for a special use permit to allow a body art establishment at 4330 Harland Street for the following reasons. One, this request for a special use meets all applicable conditions as required by Section 26-114 of the City of Wheat Ridge Code of Laws. Two, there will be no detrimental effect on health, safety, welfare, or convenience to the public in the area. Three, the special use permit will not create an adverse impact greater than allowed under existing zoning for the property. Four, there will be no impact on light, air, or water to adjacent property owners. Five, the special use will not create or contribute to blight in the neighborhood and will not overburden the capacities of the existing streets, parks, schools, and other public facilities and services, with the following conditions. One, the special use for this establishment shall be issued to the applicant and may not be inherited. Two, the parking lot must be restriped to reflect 90-degree parking. Three, the SUP shall be consistent with the definition of a body art establishment as specified in City Code Section 26-123. Four, the business shall operate in compliance with all state and county regulations regarding safe and sanitary practice of body art, the safe and sanitary physical environment where body art is performed, and the safe and sanitary conditions of equipment utilized in body art procedures. Five, approval from Jefferson County Health Department must be obtained and submitted in order for the City of Wheat Ridge to issue a building permit and certification of occupancy. Six, multiple documented legitimate complaints for the businesses shall be grounds for initiating enforcement procedures of City Code Section 26-114-F. Seven, operation hours of the business shall cease by 8:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday and 10:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday. Eight, the number of artists allowed to perform work in this studio shall be limited to two as regulated by Jefferson County Health Department.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, second by Councilmember Reinhardt. Discussion on the main motion. Mr. Stites?
I just want to say one thing. Last several months, under council comments, I've said this is an excellent time to relocate your business or your home to Wheat Ridge. If this passes, we're getting a double whammy, we're getting a business and a home in Wheat Ridge. I asked how long that building has sat vacant, it's sat vacant for two years, it is in disarray. I think it's gonna be an excellent time to get the property upgraded, that, in that particular built, well, the building, for sure, and in that particular part of the neighborhood. And if this passes, then I'd like to welcome you to Wheat Ridge.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dahl?
Not that I'm suggesting council needs to add this condition, but unless you're gonna do it by amendment on this motion, now is the time, if you wish, to add a condition with respect to the sign, its size, and what's recited on the sign. There was discussion about it, I don't presume to tell the council you should add that condition, but if that's what you're intending to do, then it should be added by amendment to the motion. If not, then you can just take the motion the way it has been read.
Is there any amendments? Okay, please poll the council on the main motion. Thank you, Resolution 20-2010, Councilmember Sang.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 20-2010, Case Number WA 10-3, a variance to allow the amount of total floor area devoted to the residential use of the structure to exceed the amount of floor area devoted to the commercial use on property Zone RC located at 4330 Harland Street for the following reasons. One, there will be no detrimental effect on health, safety, welfare, or convenience to the public in the area. Two, there will be no impact on light, air, or water to adjacent property owners. Three, the variance will not create or contribute to blight in the neighborhood and will not overburden the capacities of existing streets, parks, schools, and other public facilities and services. Four, the character of the area will not be altered by the request. Five, the applicants are proposing a substantial investment in the property, which would not otherwise happen if the variance is denied. Six, the variance will result in accommodations for a person with disabilities to be made, with the following conditions. One, the area floor dedicated to the residence may not increase either through conversion of the studio to livable space or through the construction of additions to the structure that would be for residential use. Two, the structure may not be used wholly as a residential structure at any point.
Is there a second? We have a motion for approval, second by Councilmember Reinhardt, this motion requires six or more votes. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I'd just like to make a comment that I could remember back in the 90s when massage parlors came in, and there was a big hullabaloo about letting people do massages, and that has all changed, even physicians are suggesting that people have massages today.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. The order of test, the next item, the purpose of first reading is to notify the public of the date and time of the public hearing. Amendments are allowed on first reading, public comment is not allowed on first reading. Item three is Council Bill 07-2010, Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 07-2010, An Ordinance Approving the Sale of Designated Park Land Near the Intersection of West 38th Avenue and Kipling Street, and in connection therewith, approving an agreement. I'd like to read the issue, so there's no misinterpretation on this. A master plan for the park property located at 38th and Kipling was completed and approved in 2008. The park master plan addressed the actual park design as well as accommodate the parking lot deficiency of the Apple Ridge Cafe located at the southeast corner of 38th and Kipling. The park master plan included a pedestrian bicycle trail along Kipling Street. However, there is insufficient Kipling right-of-way adjacent to Apple Ridge Cafe to extend the trail to 38th Avenue. Acquisition of property from the restaurant site would allow construction of the trail connection and provide continuity to 38th Avenue. The restaurant site is not large enough to meet the restaurant's parking needs or provide convenient access to their trash dumpster. The city has accommodated this business need for many years through a license agreement for the use of park property south of the restaurant site for trash truck access. Selling a portion of the park property to the restaurant owner while buying a portion of the restaurant site along Kipling will provide a permanent solution concerning the restaurant parking issue and will allow the city to construct the trail to 38th Avenue. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 07-2010, Approving the Sale of Designated Park Land Near the Intersection of West 38th Avenue and Kipling Street, and in connection therewith, approving an agreement on first reading, order it published. Public hearing is set for Monday, May 10, 2010, at 7:00 p.m. in the city council chambers, and if it approved, take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, second by Councilmember Demott, please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item four, Councilmember Reinhardt?
I'd like to introduce a motion to award SOQ 10-09, Design Build Park Signs to Gordon Sign, an amount of $25,000. The name and identification, the name identification addresses signs located with the entrance to the parks are in need of updating. The signs are currently constructed of redwood and with a routed city seal and literature. The construction of a new park at 38th and Kipling has initiated the process for the design of new parks, signs for the new park as well as throughout the open park system. I'd like to just note that this is, this contract is within the budget and is funded out of Jefferson County open space, so it's fully funded and it's been through the formal city process for procurement. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve SOQ-10-09, Design Build Park Signs to Gordon Sign, Denver, Colorado, in the amount of $25,000 to be charged to the Open Space Fund 32, Account Number 32-601-800-862.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, second by Councilmember Jay, discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you, that concludes our agenda for tonight. I'd like to move on to city managers' matters.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to ask Patrick Goff, as a finance director, to give us a little bit of update on the city finances in regards to the budget and what our current reserves are that got carried over now that we have the final budget numbers in from 2009. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Goff for a brief presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. This information was forwarded to the city council last Friday through an email, but I would like to just repeat this for public's sake. As Randy mentioned, the fund balance for 2009, it was about $2.6 million, larger than we had originally expected, which is definitely a good thing for the city, and that was primarily because of some quick action by, and direction by city council and staff to cut back on budget expenditures. Our 2009 expenditures were about $740,000 less than we estimated, and the revenues came in at about $1.9 million more than we expected, and most of those variances in the revenues were because of, a lot of those were because of the revenues that the city received for services provided for building permits and building use tax and planned review fees for quite a bit of work from the July 20th storm. That's still continuing through, still continuing through the end of the year, and it's actually continuing at the beginning of this year. Also, there was, there was quite, quite a bit of variance in, in some of our large revenue sources, such as sales tax, auto use tax. As you can imagine, it's very difficult during this, these economic times to estimate revenue sources. They're not tracking as they have been normally in the past, and they're probably not going to for the next couple of years, so it's gonna be very difficult to estimate what our actual revenues are going to be. our actual revenues are going to be. So it's good news that we do have quite a bit additional funds in our fund balance. We do have a nine-point-one million dollar fund balance at the end of two thousand and nine, which carried over to this year, and that money hopefully will be used to, if the economic times continue as they have been for the last couple of years, we're going to need that money to pay for our basic services. If the economy improves, that'll be additional money that we can, that can be used to catch up on expenditures that have been put on the back burner because of the economic times.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Goff. I do want to take this opportunity too to thank the directors and really all of staff. We've, we probably reacted much quicker, much earlier than a lot of our neighboring cities when it came to recognizing the downturn in the economy about eighteen months ago. And really what you see here is a result of those efforts. We asked all the staff to significantly cut back on expenditures. Again, pretty much anything they did not need to spend, we asked them not to. We asked them to look at basically all expenditures and then even the revenue streams within their departments and make those cutbacks, make those adjustments. And again, they've really stepped up, and we've certainly taken some more aggressive actions than even some of our neighboring communities when it comes to burlough days and even increasing salaries and positions. But again, I think it's made us certainly weather this a lot better than some of the communities around us that are still starting to get a handle on their budgets. So with that, I just wanted to recognize all those that helped contribute to carrying over this larger fund balance. And again, that certainly gives us more flexibility as we move into the future and as we wait for the economy to rebound here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. City Attorneys Matters?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
City Clerk Matters?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Reinhardt?
A couple of follow-up items from the strategic planning session. First, we do have dates that seem to be working, and we're trying to finalize it, but we're most of the way there to, for the, for the second part two of the strategic planning session. We're looking at the Citizen Summit the evening of six-ten. There's going to be a package to follow with some of the, some materials for the council to work with, and we're looking for invitations for eight-ish per councilperson to go from the community for input, and I've got a little paperwork to pass out on that. The following, on the eleventh, we will, and then the morning of the eleventh and morning of the twelfth, on the same sort of schedule we did for the last session, we're going to have the strategic planning session and work on our, our governance rules. Second, there was a follow-up item which, which I'm not sure really felt to me, but I'm not, didn't think there was anybody else to pick it up, was that we discussed having a council committee to, to exercise a, a study on, on the effectiveness, the staffing and the pay scales for the persons within the administration. And unless somebody wants to volunteer me not to do it, which I will jump up and not do when asked, I'm perfectly willing to sort of sit at the head of that, of that committee, but I'd really like two other, two other volunteers to, to join me in that exercise.
Yeah. Yeah, I've done quite a few performance, been part of performance audits before, so I would like to volunteer to help select the firm.
Any other taker? What I would, what I see the first step as is, is to, the staff has apparently listed four potential consultants to use us. We would have to, in my mind, refine the scope of what we're asking for and maybe bring the scope back to the council for a head nod before we went out for RFPs and then, and then move it forward at that point, is my thought process. Yes? You want to do one?
Okay, great. That'd be great. So I, I believe it'll be council members, Barry, Sane, and myself trying to get that going. So, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Jay?
Oh, I had the pleasure of being a judge, and I want to congratulate the Wheat Ridge High School students, the seniors, because being a judge at the, what they call the Capstone Project, which was a year-long, a year-long study they made of a specific area, a specific project, an area. They did presentations, and they were graded on them and created a product for that, and I thank Mr. DiTullio for getting me introduced to that. It was just a real, a real joy, and the students, I was proud of them.
Thank you. Councilmember Demott?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I'd like to take a moment to express my condolences on the passing of Tom Douglas to his family and friends. He was a good friend and a Wheat Ridge business owner, passed away last month. I'd like to wish his son, Tony, and his family best wishes and best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sane?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Barry?
Yes, at the, our last meeting, we had Assistant Louise Turner come in and, and talk about the need for rental assistance, and Mr. Demott, you said you were going to discuss that with the Housing Authority either the next day. I'm wondering if you did and if you could update us on what that discussion was about.
The day after that, we had a strategic planning session with the Housing Authority. We haven't had our next meeting yet, but that should be coming middle of May, and will be updated by, can't think of the consultant's name, but he'll be coming in, and he did have some suggestions on some different county grants that we could obtain and some different programs. He was going to get us information on our follow-up.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank Mr. Young and the staff for, again, tightening their belts, and I think the staff did a good job in a short amount of time of reducing expenses. It, you know, we tried to be very conservative. I mean, I think most of council was very conservative in, in trying to come up with expenses. It was a year in which we couldn't predict, or maybe even next year we couldn't predict what was going to happen, and it seems to be best to err on the side of being conservative and preserve our reserves, and I want to thank them for the good job they had done on that. On the Denver Regional Council of Governments, there's been a new call-out for projects. There's some extra monies this year that we won't have for next year, and so the staff is going to submit some projects for sidewalks on Wadsworth, possibly on Kipling, and possibly a road construction project, and hopefully maybe we might get some funding for that. We'll have to see what happens. And I've been sitting on the Transportation Improvement Plan Committee that is, is looking at amending or updating the criteria about how projects get put on the Transportation Improvement Plan, and we're about halfway through that process, and when that's through, I'll give council an update on what criteria has come out of that process. Thank you.
Ms. Adams?
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Langworth?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Stites?
Oh, yeah. Let me talk to you a second about weeds. With all the snow, rain, sleet, and hail we've been getting lately, it's a great fertilizer for weeds, and I just want to kind of caution you and control it, starting now. We want to keep our city beautiful. Two, as evidenced tonight, it's a great time to relocate your business and/or home to Wheat Ridge. If you need any help, see staff or one of us. Three, please try to do, again, a positive thing for either your community, your family, your neighborhood. And four, as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of things tonight. First of all, I wanted to pass out a memo to, it's not really a memo, it's just sort of an FYI for our new council members, and just to kind of refresh current council members. There's been a couple of things discussed at the retreats, has been talking about looking at different ways on park maintenance to cut costs possibly, and also to look at parks in, in general, and I wanted to let the new council members know, especially in the highlighted yellow, and this is the ballot question from two thousand and four. I asked the city clerk to print it off, and I highlighted in the yellow that back in two thousand and four, basically the sales tax increase that the voters approved was for ten additional police department personnel and programs to retain and attract businesses and jobs to the community, and also to maintain appropriate park and recreation staff and equipment. I just wanted the new council members and remind the older council members around council what that sales tax was more or less intended for and earmarked for, and I also wanted to, there's a quote here from the benefits of parks, so why America needs more parks, city parks and open spaces, is the trust from public land. As the park proceeds, at Thirty-Eighth and Kipling, there's been a lot of positive support, but we still have some folks who really don't know, understand why that, that project is being done, and I wanted to read a excerpt from this author. It says, "Numerous studies have shown that parks and open space increase the value of neighboring residential property. Growing evidence points to a similar benefit on commercial property value, and that's one of the reasons why I've supported the park at Thirty-Eighth and Kipling is to help us redevelop the property across the street on the west side of Kipling and to make that property more desirable and more available for redevelopment. The availability of park and recreational facilities is an important quality of life factor for corporations choosing where to locate facilities and for well-educated individuals choosing a place to live. City parks such as San Antonio's Riverwalk Park often become important tourism draws, contributing heavily to local businesses." And then the other thought that I have, and I've mentioned this several times, that the park at Thirty-Eighth and Kipling not only beautifies and does positive things for the community, but also creates jobs in an economy where the economy is down. U.S. voters have repeatedly shown their willingness to raise their own taxes to pay for new or approved parks. In two thousand and two, one-hundred-and-eighty-nine conservation funding measures appeared on ballots in twenty-eight states. Voters approved three-quarters of these, generating ten billion dollars in conservation-related funding, and that just translates to, to jobs for Americans and American companies. I also wanted to thank Congressman Ed Promutterd. He will be meeting with Dr. Cog and Seadog. We're setting up a meeting to look at his earmarked funding for Thirty-second Youngfield or I-70 Youngfield. Hopefully, we'll have some information on that coming out soon. The memo from the, the city went to Congressman Promutterd and Melanie and Jerry Pfeiffer, and they're working on setting up the meetings now to work with Dr. Cog and Seadog on actually bringing some funding for that location at I-70 and Youngfield. I want to thank Tim Pronto for having input on that memo to discuss funding that location with earmarks from, from the Congress. I also wanted to thank Temple Inland, the company, and Wheat Ridge had spent fifteen million dollars on an upgrade in their community and our community to improve their facility, and the donation to the public art for five thousand dollars. I also want to thank Kevin and Diane Robb, who was working on the art, and also Tom Abbott and Joyce Manwaring for Parks and Rec, who's worked hard on that project for the last four years. I also wanted to thank Councilmember Jay and, and the citizens and, and staff who went to the Capstone judging at Wheat Ridge High School. What they're doing now is seniors have to, like Councilmember Jay mentioned, the seniors have to do a project, that's a year-long project, to make a presentation in front of judges, that's all the seniors, and they had probably a hundred judges at that night, and they actually went through each student, and they were judged, and they were given a grade based on their judging. There was like six judges, I believe, per, per classroom, and it really was an excellent show. It's the first year for the Capstone Project, and they'll be doing it hopefully next year too, to just maintain as literacy and English to maintain public speaking. And then last, I wanted to thank the folks that volunteered for the Colfax Marathon May sixteenth. I believe I have all the names, but Patrick, if I'm missing a name, let me know, because I know you've been helping out with the staff. I have Sarah DiTullio, my daughter, Adam Teetz, Davis Reinhardt.
Thank you.
Jerry Dahl, and I believe Heather Guyer. That's the, that's the Heather. So those five will be in the relay on May sixteenth. I'll be cheering them on, but I won't be running. But the first prize is a four-thousand-dollar cash prize, and that money will be earmarked for the public art if we win. There's also a second and third prize, so hopefully we can pull that off. I think we have a pretty good team, though, with, so far. With that, I believe we are adjourned. Thank you.
Wheat Ridge Channel Eight, keeping you informed on events in your community. Wheat Ridge Channel Eight, keeping you informed on events in your community.